Welcome to the Board of Education's February 9th, 2023 Regular Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Watson. Thank you, Mr. Watson. And Board members, a few announcements. Mr. McMillan will not be in attendance this evening. And we do expect him back next month. And Monday, February 20th is a system-wide in-service day and therefore student holiday. Also, just a reminder that these public meetings are the only opportunity the Board has to discuss items that come before us as an elected body. We're glad you chose to attend tonight, but please note that elevated noise makes it difficult for all of us to hear. And so as well, not only those here, but those viewing from home as well. So we ask if you need to have a discussion with someone else in the room that you will please step outside to do so. And also Board members and staff along those same lines. And we have received some feedback that indicates sometimes those in the audience and those watching at home cannot hear our comments. So if everyone can please be mindful to speak a little loudly and into your microphone during discussion, that would be helpful. And as far as changes to the agenda, you received an email yesterday, but I wanted to remind you that due to time and sensitivity, Superintendent Risewick and I agreed to the addition of Item 5C9, which is a form agreement with Winter Guard International to allow some of their high school bands to participate in their upcoming events. Also, I would like to add, Ms. Owen, sorry, request a legislative update. I think she has a brief update for us and if we could just do that prior to the consent agenda. So any other changes to the agenda?
I apologize, Madam Chair, for not mentioning it earlier, but I'd like to add an update on the custodian. Will we stand with that from the superintendent, please?
So we will add that right after the legislative update? Can we do that? Are we good with that? Okay. Any other requested changes?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull Item 8C from the consent agenda for additional discussion. Did we already?
It's not on consent.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah. Yeah. I thought the same thing too, but it wasn't. I was like, yes, so, okay. So do we have a motion to approve? So a motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to say that all of the things that, all of the advantages we had from having lobbyists and having our association with other districts, without those, it is a huge lift. So it's very important that if anyone knows of any bills that you have questions about or concerns about, please let me know. There are nearly 300 bills right now related to education that we're following. So the, my ability to get to all of those is very limited. Since last week, I've spent about 47 hours just on legislative items. So any help you can give there would be greatly appreciated. I appreciate Ms. Jackson reaching out and giving me some questions that our counselors have had about a particular bill. So if there are any other questions, if you'll let me know, that will be greatly helpful. So I can reach out to the bill sponsors or to others on the committee to get that information for us. All that being said, this week has been pretty light. So the only bill we are following, House Bill 68, has moved from Subcommittee, from the K-12 Subcommittee, and it will be in the Education Administration Committee next week. And it is a bill to extend the summer learning programs. So instead of those summer learning programs ending, it's to extend them one further. They believe there's a great need to continue those. And some of the questions that were asked are about our flexibility, because they've noticed that there are more students in lower grades who have more consistent attendance there. And so they want to be sure that districts have flexibility to use that summer learning however we need to. So it, it can be focused more on lower grades, it could be focused more on a particular grade. However, we need to do it, they are looking for us to have that flexibility. So that's something that I appreciate, and I think, I think as a district, we will as well. They are, it looks like that is funded. They are also using some TANF funds if that is possible for them, and they're looking at all different ways to do that. But the main thing is for us to have flexibility in using that. So that's something, that's definitely something we want to support moving forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Dr. Risewick, do you have that update for Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually going to have Ms. Himmigan speak to a little bit of that, and Dr. Adams may have something to add. I know we've had a couple of days now where we've had those custodians that have been here, but I know Ms. Himmigan has the actual numbers and some of that, so I'll turn it over to her.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, we do have, as of, these numbers are as of Monday, February 6th. There were 50 Duncan &amp; Sons employees that were cleared to work, and then we had eight additional that were, we were awaiting background check results for approval. So they, I believe the contract provided for 50 positions, but they've sent more to be cleared just to allow for some flexibility.
That's some good news there. I know that was a concern. All right, so any other questions on that or discussion? All right, Ms. Cottney?
Item 5, Consent Agenda.
Sub motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6A, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D-100, Fiscal Management Goals and Objectives as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6B, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D-211, Capital Asset Investment and Management as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6C, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-110, Buildings and Grounds Management as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6D, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-150, Security as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6E, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-171, Scheduling and Routing as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6F, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-180, Use of School Systems Owned or Leased Vehicles as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6G, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-190, Food Service Management as amended.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6H, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-191, School Nutrition Program Charges as amended.
So motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6I, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-200, Insurance Management as amended.
So motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6J, Approve First Reading of New Knox County Board of Education Policy I-173, Athletic Support Organizations and Management as amended.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7A, Approve Tennessee Department of Education Innovative School Models Grant in the Amount of $23,500,000.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7B, Approve Receipt of Batel Education TSI NSTEMX Classroom Grants in the Amount of $47,500 for Dogwood Elementary School, Green Magnet Academy, Shenondale Elementary School, Farragut Intermediate School, Carter Middle School, Holston Middle School, KCS Virtual Middle School, Whittle Springs Middle School, Central High School, Farragut High School, Gibbs High School, and South Door High School.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7C, Approve Knox County Government Grant in the Amount of $20,000 with Required Matching Funds in the Amount of $20,000 for Dogwood Elementary School's Playground Project.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7D, Approve Grant Agreement with Project Lead The Way Incorporated for Grant Funding in the Amount of $10,000 for Farragut High School.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7E, Approve Nishwanga Foundation AP Access for All Mini Grants in the Total Amount of $500 for Karnes High School.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7F, Approve Computer Honor Society Grant in the Amount of $1,500 for LNN STEM Academy.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8A, Approve Design Contract with Design Innovation Architects, Inc. for Innovative School Model Projects in the Amount of $1,522,200.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B, Approve Contracts with Apex Construction Group, LLC, Holston Construction Services, LLC, Shelton General Contractors, Skilled Services, LLC, and Stewksberry Construction, Inc. for Provision of Miscellaneous Construction and Renovation Services for the Term of February 1, 2023 to January 31, 2024, which may be extended for four additional years.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8C, Approve Contract with IC System, Inc. for Provision of Collection Services for Unpaid Student Meal Accounts for the Term of February 1, 2023 to January 31, 2024, which may be extended for four additional years.
So Board members, I would like to make a motion to withdraw this contract from tonight's agenda and do another waiver for the 2223 school year like we did last year, and then revisit this policy in policy review. And, you know, I have talked to Dr. Risewick about it, and Dr. Adams, and Ms. Foster. There are some reasons this came into play, and I'm sure Gary can speak to them too. And, you know, but I do think we, you know, with partially the economy the way it is too right now. I mean, I think a lot of people are struggling too. So I would like for us to consider doing another waiver this year and then having a lengthier discussion about this at our next policy review meeting on March 24th.
Second.
Can you, can I, can we just get some explanation on exactly what kind of wa, what that waiver is from whom and that kind of thing, please?
So what we did last year was just suspend the, the collections aspect of it. Is that correct, Dr. Risewick?
And Gary, you may have helped me if I'm wrong. I think, I think the last two years, there was a USDA across the board because of, for the federal side. But the year prior to that, I believe the Board did vote to suspend the policy for that year, if I'm correct.
Yes, that's my understanding, and, and I think, I think Ms. Foster's here, and she's, she's certainly the expert on it. But yes, that's my understanding. I would also add that, that some type of policy, this, this policy was put into place for a couple of different reasons. One was audit findings back in 15 and 16. And the other one was closely on the heels of that, USDA regulations require a policy. Doesn't, doesn't necessarily say exactly what has to be in that policy. But, but by July 1st, 2017, this Board needed to have a policy, so it did. Now, if you all want to talk about what's in that policy, that's certainly your prerogative, but, but I would say that.
So I'm looking this next, sorry. Looks like you, Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So that we can be better prepared to discuss this at policy review, I'd like to see if there's a possibility in budgeting for us to look at a position that would be a Knox County Schools Collections Position so that the collections could be done instead of from a viewpoint of profit, because the collection agent takes a piece of that. So instead of being done from a lens of profit, that it be done more from a social work lens so that we could find out where the issues are and if students are having difficulty, that, other difficulties that we may need to know about. Or maybe it's just they need to fill out the correct forms. So if we could have a position that did that, I think it would be approximately the same amount that the percentage is that the collection agent would take out of this. So if the staff could look at what that would cost and what that would take, and if that would solve the issue, I'd like to look at that at policy review.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you bringing the, the motion. I want to make sure too that I'm clear on the waiver issue. So to me, there's, there's two possibilities. One is, we just don't approve this contract tonight, and we're not going to have a collection agent, because we don't currently have a collection agent, correct? Is that correct? We don't currently have a collection agent? And we just leave things in terms of the status quo until we?
Wait, so we, the current contract we have ends in May. I don't believe they start doing the work until June, if I understood that correctly, talking to Ms. Foster.
Oh, I was under the understanding that it expired, so if we can get clarity on that, that would be great.
But in, in the other, I guess waiver might not be the appropriate term, but, you know, this comes before the Board because it's part of Board policy, right? So what, what the spirit of that is, that, you know, they are honoring Board policy to bring it to us. So just us saying, we don't want to do this at this time.
So we would, so really what I think you're asking is for us to suspend that portion of Board policy until we discuss it.
And, yeah, right, the pertinent portion of it. They, they said waiver at one time, but regardless of how we want to word that, the intent is that, you know, the reason it's here is because it is Board policy, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Ms. Foster, can you, do we, is the contract that we had currently active?
So we haven't had to use it the past couple of years, but we have used the contract. We used it in, for collections in the 1617 school year, 1718, and 1819.
Okay, so we have an active contract that we just haven't been using because we suspended Board policy related to this in a prior year?
So we, Board policy was suspended in 1920, and then we didn't have any accounts to send to collections in 2021 or 2122 due to the federal waivers, correct?
Okay, so it's just been an inactive contract?
Correct.
So based on what Ms. Christie is saying, if we choose to suspend this portion of policy, then we would still have an active contract that we just would not be utilizing?
If you all approve the contract, yes.
Well, no, I don't mean if we approve this contract.
We don't have any renewals left. So that's why we solicited this contract again. So we would not, and we, we send accounts to collections at the end of the fiscal year, so we would be utilizing this contract in July. And the current contract we have would no longer be valid in July.
Okay, so by the time we would use it, it would be null and void anyway.
Correct.
I understand. Okay, thank you. So Ms. Christie, I agree, and I think maybe the, maybe the right language is that we suspend this portion of the Board policy until we have opportunity to discuss it. And Ms. Owen, I do appreciate your suggestion and would love the idea of, really the spirit of it being more about how do we come alongside of a family versus somebody who's doing it for, for profit purposes. And I don't fault them for that, that's their business, but, yeah.
And we, if I may, we actually do have someone in my department who is doing that right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we could have just a history of pre-COVID for that policy review, that'd be great. So we can see what has happened maybe the past, you know, two or three years. And the other thing I wonder is, since we have had the USDA waiver, I wonder if there are parents who maybe don't even realize that, that they have to pay this year. So probably wouldn't hurt to remind everybody because I can, I mean, even though I'm sure they've been told, there's a lot to take in in the beginning of the school year, and they may not realize it. So that would probably be good for all the principals to just send a reminder to parents.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Horn, I can tell you that I know, and I'm getting reminded often. So I think my son is up to $50 that he's now going to have to pay because he packs his lunch, but then he all... because he packs his lunch, but then he also eats lunch as well, so. Yeah, we are getting automatic messages, so.
All right, and I do think we, we have a, um, we have a public forum speaker on this as well, right?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have, uh, we have a public forum speaker on this, Mr. Tyler Givens. Mr. Givens? Welcome. Oh, let us get our time clock up for you, sir, I'm sorry. We have it up, okay. Just state your name and county of residence, and you have three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tyler Givens, I live in Knox County. Oh, there we go. All right, I'll start that over again. Uh, good evening, my name is Tyler Givens, I live in Knox County. And you guys have already, kind of already danced around the issue that I wanted to speak about, and I'm, I'm glad to see that there was extra attention paid to this, so. Uh, I just wanted to say that I, I don't think it's good to let a private company take 21.5% cut of, of whatever they can get from families that owe a little lunch money. Uh, and I just wanted to talk about that a little bit. So, we know that the federal government funds free and reduced lunch services for kids in schools that are poor enough. Uh, and I, and I doubt that any of your children, short of a, a $50 debt that's probably easily remedied, are really lacking for, for lunch money here as well. Uh, somewhere in between are working-class people who have fallen behind for some reason. You know, a pandemic job loss, or an expensive medical emergency, or the death of a provider in the family. Families like this might not qualify for federal funds, but they can still run out of money before the end of the month. And if you hire a collection agency, we're deciding that those families should suffer even more. Um, our superintendent has a quarter million dollar salary. All of you guys are homeowners. Most of you have enjoyed significant gains in the past few years. I think two of you are landlords. Uh, one of you has like four 800 square foot units that rent out for $1,200 a month. And, and I bet those rates have gone up. Um, one of you received your home basically as a gift from your parents just a few years ago. Uh, but between 30 to 40% of the county rents. And, and rents are up, and wages are not. So working-class Knox County citizens are, are really feeling that crunch, and they're rarely the loudest voices in this room. So school attendance is mandatory, there's punishments for students and parents when kids don't show up to class. I don't think there should be more punishment for families that can't afford to pay for food in school. We have volumes of research that show that well-fed students learn better than hungry students. And if the purpose of schools is education, then students should have high-quality food for free every day. And if we are not brave enough to move our school system in that direction, I think that we should at least give some grace to the people that are falling in, in the gaps, especially right now. So I really support that you guys are, are delaying action on this until you can, uh, review this policy. Uh, so I just say, please, you know, decide that we don't need to hire bullies to hassle parents and families over lunch money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to withdraw the contract with IC Systems Incorporated from tonight's agenda, suspend the procedures for collecting debt section, um, the collecting debt, debt section of Policy E9, E191, and move Policy E191 back to policy review.
So we had a motion and a se, who, who did the second, Ms. Owen?
We had several seconds.
Oh, okay.
I think Ms. Owen was one of them, and that was the first one I heard.
Okay, so, okay, so we had a second by Ms. Owen, so do we have any more discussion on that? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, approve agreement with Asset Panda for provision of asset management software for a one-year period at a cost of $23,985.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A, approve fiscal year 2023 general-purpose budget line item transfers in the amount of $358,616 for July 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Horn, any discussion? Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Iswick, can you just have somebody put this adoption of textbooks in context in terms of just our process of textbook, uh, adoption? And, and also for some people in the public, I'm sure this seems like a tremendous amount of money for any books.
That's the next item, Mr. Watson.
What's that?
That's the next item.
Oh, my goodness, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. Well, those questions will stand.
Okay, all right. They're already working on them. All right, so we had, um...
So, the motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Horn, um, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9B, approve fund balance designation in the amount of $7,500,000 for math textbooks and science and ELA materials.
So motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Mr. Triplet. Mr. Watson, would you like to add anything to that before I cut you off, sorry?
No, 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 that was, that was good. There was two transfer items at the same time, and I just got confused which one we were on, so. Same questions, Dr. Iswick, thank you. Do you need me to repeat it?
No, no, you're good, thanks, Mr. Watson. I'll actually ask Dr. Wilson to speak to, uh, to the adoption process. And, and again, we can speak to the overall cost and how this is not really the forecast too, if we need finance to help.
Yeah, so if, if you'll recall, earlier in the semester, last semester, Gary Petco came to talk about the Textbook Adoption Committee, which is a, which is a standard process we go through as we are, we fall into different cycles with the state for textbook adoption. Um, this, in particular for this item, uh, we do have a math textbook adoption coming up this year, again, driven by those state timelines. Um, so the bulk of what you see in that cost, the seven and a half million, is for, uh, math textbooks. Um, again, bringing it, uh, early enough in the process to ensure that we've got materials in hand so that we can, uh, provide teacher support and training during the summer and be ready to launch those things. Um, that is not the full cost, uh, that, when you look at that for the math adoption, I believe we've got like 4.27 already earmarked in ESER for that. Um, and actually, this amount that you see for, uh, for the math textbooks, um, is kind of the middle-of-the-road package, if you will. Uh, our teachers do go through a process of selection, and based on those recommendations, once we, we know which, uh, direction they're going, we'll have a better sense of exactly what the final cost would be. The science and ELA portions of that, uh, as I said, the state is the driver in terms of the cycles of when we adopt textbooks and curricula. And they've actually pushed the science adoption back a little bit, um, since we last adopted. So we actually have a couple of gap years in terms of materials, consumables, things like that that go with the curriculum, and we're just filling in for those gap years till we make the adoption. Um, and then with the ELA materials, that is, that is a source back to making some transitions to really align our, uh, early literacy instruction across all of our elementary schools.
And there's been times in the past when we've not been able to fully adopt when we needed, correct, for budgetary concerns?
When you look at the, when you look at that, yeah, that's where you start to have to kind of wheel and deal a little bit and, and figure out what you have money for and, and in terms of what you adopt.
Yeah. Mr. McPherson, because this is coming out of fund balance, could you speak to the impact on fund balance overall? Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Watson, uh, members of the board. Um, so yes, this will, our proposal is that it would come from fund balance. The one thing, um, that I, I could report right now is we are running at about an 8% surplus in sales tax collections, uh, through the first five data points. Uh, those dollars alone would be sufficient to even do this, um, that, which would, which would essentially mean we wouldn't even have to go into the existing fund balance levels. Technically, it would be fund balance, it would just be those dollars that would not ordinarily close to fund balance, they would be earmarked. Right now, we're probably sitting, you ask about the, the level, it's, uh, but, you know, that's kind of a difficult thing to pin down, but, uh, on a, you know, on a daily basis. We can pin down cash, fund balance is a little different animal, but we're probably looking at about 69 million.
Um, after this or before?
Uh, this would be, well, so we're currently at about 69 million. We're projecting a surplus right now through five data points of about 8 million. So after this, it would bring it back down to about the 69 million.
So you think it would be about a wash, so typically when we have that surplus, that we just go to fund balance?
Correct.
Great. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? So we have a motion by Mr. Watson and a second by Mr. Triplet. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9C, approve fund balance designation in the amount of $217,532.36 for replacement of the playground at Adrian Burnett Elementary School.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Owen, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9D, approve fund balance designation in the amount of $209,985.33 for installation of preschool and primary grades playground at Lonsdale Elementary School.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen, any discussion? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Dr. Iswick, we had a lot of conversation back in December around playgrounds. So can you speak to what's driving these two agenda items and why they're before us tonight?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Watson. Um, so these are, trying to, trying to stay, you know, the, the board had healthy discussion in December. So us trying to stay true to historic practice and not trying to set new precedent, right? For, for the board as you all make decisions. We, uh, both, in both of these situations, we have a practice when we build, if we have to remove or, or damage, uh, playgrounds, that we do restore that. And in both of these cases, Adrian Burnett, where we actually built all that same property, we had to remove the existing playground. So this is, um, this is a replacement for that, uh, in, in real-time dollars. I mean, this is obviously more than it would have cost back when it was built. Uh, and then when you get to Lonsdale, a little trickier because that playground is still intact. However, Sam Hill, where the students came from, that we were actually pre-K through first grade, kind of our primary area, they had a playground there as well. So by moving those, those primary students back to the, the bigger new Lonsdale, uh, again, technically, their playground from Sam Hill was gone, so we replaced that as well. So these are both replacement playgrounds.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the distinction. I think it's important, especially because we just approved an agenda item just a little bit ago for another, approving a grant for another school who's been raising funds for their own. So, thank you for the work, uh, Dr. Adams and the, the rest of the team for bringing this proposal to us. And I know we, um, in our discussion in December, I talked about bringing back a more robust proposal. I've been working on that within the community and the district, and so I look forward to presenting something, um, for the board to consider at the March meeting. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion by Reverend Butler and a second by Ms. Owen, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9E, approve adjustment to Amherst Elementary School and Cedar Bluff Elementary School zone lines.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Horn, any discussion? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I know in my short time on the board, just two and a half years, I've not seen a lot of agenda items like this. And typically, I've heard us talk about creating all-new zones. So, Dr. Adams, can you just speak to what's driving, um, zone lines for two particular schools?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Watson, Madam Chair. Uh, so basically, what we have currently, uh, there's a subdivision that has approximately five homes where students are not currently residing. Uh, beyond that point, there's a new subdivision going in, so we're basically just capturing, uh, that new subdivision, so the lines are clean. Uh, Mr. Dillingham has done an exceptional job of make sure that we have clean lines so we don't, uh, cut across a neighborhood, uh, right across the street. And so, even though it's not perfect throughout the county, uh, he has done an exceptional job of ensuring that we capture, uh, full neighborhoods where we can.
Sure, so what's creating this is new development?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Adams.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Horn, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9F, approve the new Northwest Sector Elementary School to be named Mill Creek Elementary School with school colors of blue and silver and an honor as the school's official mascot.
So, motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Mr. Watson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9G, grant authority for the Director of Schools to approve and sign any settlement agreements related to the Knox County Board of Education's litigation with Jewel and the other defendants in said suit, and to accept any related settlement funds on the school system's behalf moving forward.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Mr. Watson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so that concludes our regular agenda. Ms. Henderson, we have public forum?
Yes, Madam Chair. First up, uh, Mr. DePree, David DePree. Welcome, sir. Please state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
All right, thank you. David DePree, my county of residence is Knox County. And, uh, I'm here to speak about, uh, a situation that I thought was an atrocity for Holston Middle School. Holston Middle School was probably the only school in the district whereby the students that played on the basketball team, and for the girls and the boys, as well as the cheerleaders, had to get their own transportation to and from games. I've never heard of such. I think Vine had to do it for one or two games as well. But all the other middle schools had buses. All the other middle schools had transportation. When I played basketball back in 19 whatever with Vine, we had a bus all the time. And it's hard to believe that here X number of years later, that Holston Middle School could not have a bus. Which is crazy because they had excellent teams. The one, the girls won the, the district, and the boys were runner-up in the district. They went on to the regionals and had to have their own transportation to the games in Cleveland, Tennessee, where both teams lost. Both teams probably would have won, but you know what they lacked? They lacked the opportunity to bond and be cohesive, which is what you get when you ride the bus and be able to come as a team. But you go to the games and you see this one straggling in, this one straggling in, this one coming in. You know, one or two are warming up on the basketball court, and the others are just getting there. Where do we dress? Where do we do this? And then here comes the coach, because the coach has to get their own way there. We had good teams at Holston. They could have done well in the regional tournament, the, uh, sectional tournament, but they, neither one made it because they didn't have the cohesion that comes with being able to build a team, like all the rest of the middle schools had, because they all had buses. But Holston Middle School did not have a bus. And the other part of this is this. Parents like me, who had a daughter that was a cheerleader, and other parents who had, uh, students that played or whatever, had to take off work, had to make arrangements, and had to do whatever it took to get their child there because the child wanted to be there and participate. It messed up all kinds of things. Don't let that happen when every other school, especially those on the other side of town, had buses. And you couldn't get a bus because this is on this side of town. It's a tragedy. It shouldn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sandy Bush? Welcome. Just state your name, county of residence, in three minutes.
Hi, excuse me, my name is Sandy Bush, and I live in Knox County. My name's Sandy, as I said, and I have two sons in Knox County schools. My oldest is a seventh grader who is in general education, and my youngest is a fifth grader who is in a self-contained, um, special education classroom. And he's here with me in the back, maybe out right now. Uh, I wanted to speak to you today about ABA therapists coming into the classroom to help support our students. ABA, or Applied Behavioral Analysis, is a research-based behavioral therapy. It must be prescribed by a doctor, and it is paid for by insurance for kids that have an autism diagnosis. Knox County does have behavioral support services, but they're not in every classroom every day. My son has a functional behavioral assessment and plan in place through the school, but the support CC receives, while also important, are different than ABA. Special education teachers are already tracking a lot of data for each child to measure IEP progress. They don't have enough staff in these classrooms to track behavioral data like ABA does. If a child is working through behavioral challenges, having a one-to-one therapist who specializes in that area will benefit the Knox County staff by allowing them to focus on education. My son is working with ABA on transitions and elopement, which are two of the biggest struggles he has at school. Similarly to how private-duty nurses come into school to focus on the medical needs of a child, registered behavioral technicians could come in to the classroom to focus on the behavioral needs and interventions for children. ABA can work to identify disruptive, triggers of disruptive and dangerous behaviors and teach safe responses. This in turn would reduce the frequency that these behaviors escalate to requiring emergency interventions. There's a bill in our legislature now that if passed would expand who is able to use mechanical restraint on children in special education. While it might not be possible in every situation, it makes sense to try to prevent these behaviors from escalating by allowing therapists to work with them at school. While there doesn't seem to be a written policy against outside therapists coming into the school, parents across the district are told that there is. I have been told that no outside therapists are allowed, and I think the staff at our school believes that's the case. If something really isn't IEP... If something really is an IEP, IEP team decision, there needs to be communication from the top down that this is an accepted practice. Not all students receiving special education have autism, and not all children with autism want or need to utilize ABA therapy. For those that do, however, this could really make a positive impact on their educational experience and help us all to work together to achieve the district priority of success for every student. I want my child to succeed and I'm happy to work with everyone to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Next up, we have Courtney Piper. Welcome. Just state your name and county of residence in three minutes.
Good evening. Courtney Piper, Knox County. I'm sharing my story today in the hopes that no other parent has to go through what I've been through. This board is able to make or clarify policy and can encourage the administration to do the same. That kind of leadership is needed to allow ABA therapy in Knox County classrooms and make success for every student accessible to students with autism. My son, Aiden, was diagnosed with autism in March 2022 by a medical doctor at East Tennessee Children's Hospital and prescribed ABA therapy. ABA therapy is the only therapy approved to treat autism spectrum disorder. Our insurance approved thirty hours a week. He began kindergarten at Sunnyview Primary in August of 2022. Knox County Schools implemented an IEP for Aiden in 2021, but that IEP is not meeting Aiden's special education needs. So I asked about his registered behavior technician joining him in the classroom at our expense. Details were sent to the board via email on January 25th. Over the course of five months, I've received inconsistent, conflicting, and at times false information, and have experienced delays in attempting to correspond with KCS administrators about getting ABA in the classroom for my son. Other school districts in East Tennessee allow outside providers to implement ABA in the classroom. This is not new. In September, I asked about allowing ABA therapy in the classroom and was told by the Director of Special Education that KCS had a policy against it. The Director of Special Education also compared the therapy to karate and piano lessons. I asked for the policy several times over the course of two and a half months and did not receive it. I was told the same things again by KCS employees in November at an IEP meeting, and then in December, at another IEP meeting, I was told there was no such policy. It was more of a practice. Both meetings were called at my request to ask for ABA therapy, and Aiden's board-certified behavior analyst participates in all IEP meetings. At this point, three months after I asked the initial question, the school system decided it needed to collect more data. The third IEP meeting to answer the same question was today. We were provided with a slew of support options, none included ABA, and we are reviewing them. There are four systemic failures I want to bring to your attention. First, KCS employees in a leadership position communicating false information to parents and subordinates within their department. That false information resulting in a five-month delay. KCS does not have standardized written processes and procedures for requests such as mine, which also contributes to delays. KCS Central Office meeting parents with resistance when requesting implementation of the only approved therapy to treat that child's disability. This is a critical time in Aiden's educational development. ABA therapy in the classroom will support Aiden's learning in the least restrictive environment and enable successful educational outcomes for him. I encourage immediate action to explicitly allow ABA therapy in the classroom. This cannot wait until next school year. I offer my support to that end. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Pasternak. I'm hoping I did not butcher your last name, ma'am. Okay. Just state your name, county of residence, you have three minutes.
Allison Pasternak, and I live in Knox County. Good evening. I am also here tonight to discuss allowing private ABA therapy in our schools. I'm the mother of seventh grade twins at Farragut Middle School, one of whom has been receiving ABA therapy since the spring of 2020. At the time he began therapy, my son was exhibiting disruptive and at times destructive behaviors due to an autoimmune condition which affected his brain. My son is also on the autism spectrum. Although I'm happy to report that my son is not currently exhibiting the negative behaviors for which we originally sought ABA therapy, he continues to participate in this therapy to address deficits, which can make it difficult for him to function in the real world. Since my son is a student, his real world is the classroom. While ABA can be life-saving in cases of elopement and disruptive behavior, it can also be life-changing in a child's ability to become independent in school and in society. Unfortunately, the therapy my son needs to be a successful student is not provided by Knox County schools. During the 21-22 school year, my son missed 108 days of school so that he could continue his therapy. This year, we made the difficult decision to forfeit an entire day of therapy so my son could have more days at school to access the general curriculum and be around his peers. Even with this decision, my son is missing school two days per week and is on track to have a total of 72 absences this year. These absences are excused because the school was given and accepted documentation that this type of therapy, therapy is medically necessary. The only reason we do not send my son to school daily is because the school is not able to provide the support he needs in the form of ABA therapy, nor will they allow his private therapist to work with him at school. We've been told that Autism Support Services implement ABA practices in the classroom. ABA is highly personalized and tailored to learners' needs, abilities, and motivations. It is then implemented for many hours per week by a registered behavior technician under the supervision of the BCBA. Claiming unqualified staff implement ABA strategies is like saying a teacher with sensory toys implements occupational therapy. It is not even close. The special education teachers and education assistants are not qualified to implement these strategies and therapies even if they have the time and resources to do so, which we all know they don't. My son's therapy is paid for by his insurance company. Regardless of the therapeutic setting, the insurance company will continue to pay for his therapy, and it will cost Knox County schools nothing. His therapy would be infinitely more successful if it were to be conducted in schools. Therapists make every attempt to generalize these desired behaviors, but a therapist cannot duplicate a classroom in a clinical setting. Having therapy at school, which surrounding districts allow and welcome, would enable my son to access his least restrictive environment.
Thank you. Jennifer Rose. Welcome.
Hello. Jennifer Rose, I'm here from Knox County. I'm here today as a parent and also a professional in the field. My son is six years old. He started kindergarten this year at Beaumont. He has autism along with a few other multiple diagnoses. We started ABA therapy for him when he was three. And then since then, he's been doing thirty to forty hours a week until school started this year. We had to decrease the amount of services we were doing in order for him to go to school and attend all day. He has not been able to have his services at school. We've asked when he was in pre-K and this year, during IEP meetings several times for his RBT to be able to come in. We've been given numerous excuses or just plain out told no. So I'm here because I've seen the impact that it makes, the difference that it makes for the children that receive these services. It allows them to be in the general education setting, which is where we want our kids to be if possible. It also changes their quality of life while increasing their skill acquisitions and their knowledge, but decreasing those behaviors that will maintain through into adulthood. It aligns with your 865 program that Knox County has started because it's not just for your younger children. ABA is for all kids, adults, who have autism or other neurological disorders. By allowing these services in school, it can also align with the older kids to give some of those kids a chance to go into the 865 program that Casey has revamped up, to allow them that time to build those skills into adulthood. I've seen children who was out in RBT in school during this school year have went missing for upwards of ten minutes, if not longer, while they were at school. The principal during the IEP meeting asked the parents to come up with a safety plan for their child. The child, two weeks later, eloped from the classroom, went missing. The SRO officer had to review video to find the kid in a field behind the school. This could have been stopped because this kid is also non-vocal if he'd had an RBT there with him. The student that is non-vocal communicates at home in three to four words, but with his RBT and a lot of prompting. We cannot generalize this without being in the home. ABA will also protect and cover the safety of our children while attending Knox County. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Matthews. Ms. Matthews. Welcome. Just state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Tiffany Matthews, Knox County. Good evening. My husband and I are the proud parents of four children, two of whom receive special education services under the eligibility of autism. We are zoned for the amazing New Holtwell Elementary School. Our two oldest go to New Holtwell and our two youngest go to Fort Sanders Preschool. We might just be the only family in Knox County that has two children with one-on-one aids in a general ed setting for over twenty hours per week listed on their IEPs. I do know that we are one of the few families who has this service at all in Knox County schools, and the only others I know have got this service with the help of an advocate and/or attorneys just like we did. We do not have a private ABA through insurance. What we do have, though, is what a private ABA therapist in the schools helps provide, which is direct adult support in the classroom. Paraprofessional support in the regular class is what all students with disabilities are entitled to receive unless there is data to show they cannot be satisfactorily educated in the regular classroom, even with this supplementary support. This means students with the most involved disabilities who can progress in their IEP goals and access the general curriculum with an aid, modified content, push in services by special ed teacher, speech, OT, PT, music therapy. The whole list of supplementary aids and services are supposed to be placed in the general ed classroom with those supports and services. Regular education teachers are to endorse to teach alternate assessment courses, yet must, yet most do not even know how, know they are endorsed to do this. Our oldest son, Josiah, who is in third grade, in regular education environment with one hour of pullout to resource, just switched from no modifications to modified content, and this is where I would like to tell you our greatest concern for him now and for our younger son, Jacob. Jacob, who's like Josiah in preschool, knows all his letters, numbers, shapes, colors, and some sight words and countries and capitals around the world, and therefore won't need modified content in kindergarten next year. But as autism impacts a student more once, more, once the work gets more abstract and requires a certain level of reading comprehension, like it does in third grade especially, modified content is what a student can receive, continue to be educated in the regular class alongside typically developing peers. So now, where are the modified materials? We have amazing teachers at New Holtwell, but they don't have the time or resource to create what Josiah needs as third grade modified content. I know KCS has provided other kids a service called Curriculum Material Preparation on IEPs in the past, but apparently the law department argued that it doesn't need to be listed as a service anymore, which means it doesn't get funding or staffing hours to create these modified curricular materials. We ask, where are the modifications that CDC teachers use? Why can't we use those? The shocking answer is that there aren't any, which should make everyone in this room wonder what is being taught in CDC. Please consider why KCS doesn't have modified materials available for each learning standard for each grade if they have so many in the CDC program on modified content. Please support our amazing teachers and students on modified content by following IEP teams to again list curriculum prep service. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ashley Wagner. Just state your name, residence, and you have three minutes to speak. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Ashley Wagner, Knox County. I am a board-certified behavior analyst that's licensed in the state of Tennessee. I'm here today for the families I serve and for the many children within Knox County that have been deemed medically necessary as requiring applied behavior analytic services in the classroom. I would like to start off by addressing some common reasons that have been relayed to me and the parents of Knox County students as reasons why ABA providers are not allowed in Knox County schools. Reason number one, allowing outside ABA providers is a breach in confidentiality to other students. This concern can very easily be addressed by having outside providers sign confidentiality agreements, like many surrounding school districts that allow outside providers to come in have us do. My question is why Knox County is operating differently. Reason number two, Knox County already has behavior supports in place for students provided by a behavior team and therefore does not need support from outside therapists. From my understanding, there are only five behavioral liaisons employed by Knox County. Of these five, only three are board-certified. According to Knox County's website, 9,000 students are currently receiving special education services across the county. Even if only 25% of the 9,000 students with IEPs have presenting behavioral concerns that require behavioral interventions, this leaves a ratio of one behavioral liaison to provide and meet the individual behavioral needs to 450 students. This is an unreasonable and unrealistic task for one person to perform. With such high caseloads, monitoring the implementation of each individual VIP would be impossible. Combine the lack of resources and sheer quantity of students needing these supports, Knox County unfortunately is not set up for success to meet the needs of their most vulnerable students. Furthermore, based on a recent Knox County job posting for a behavioral liaison position, a bachelor's level in education or other, or other mental health-related field is only required. This is not to say that a degree in these fields is not an accomplishment, but in order to meet the students of needs with those that may be exhibiting severe, severe behaviors of concern that pose significant health and safety risks to themselves or others, specific education and certification in ABA should be a requirement by Knox County, just as it is a requirement by the Behavior Analyst Certification Board. The board that oversees the certifications of BCBA's and RBT restricts the administrations of FBA and developmental, and development and oversight of the implementation of VIPs to a BCBA. Anyone who engages in these practices without certification is not an adherence to the BACB's Board Code of Ethics. FBA's and BIPs should not be conducted or developed by unqualified professionals. I have even had a school psychologist tell me that conducting these assessments are out of their scope of competency. Please, please allow us to help you and most importantly, help these students. By allowing a child's personal ABA provider in the classroom, we can help bridge the gap between home and school environments. We are here for you all. We are already in the homes and we are waiting for you all to just open the door for us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Kim Kreditch.
Hi, I'm Kim Kreditch. I live in Knox County. I'm here to hopefully offer some good news. I was thrilled to hear at the board, the work session, Dr. Ryswick talk about a move forward to implement some recommendations, explore some options and changing practices. And I really hope that is, I feel that that was a genuine foreshadowing of good things to come. But I'd like to offer the quickest maybe start to that that's easy, and that is to update your website for special education. I would like to, if you go to the special education website, then you will see under Programs and Services, some blue buttons. And now, what a lot of these moms have talked about is ABA therapy. But I'll tell you that I know that there, a lot of them are told, oh, we have autism support, and that is the same thing, or that offers the same strategies. Well, if you have autism support, why isn't it listed on one of these buttons here? Because I'll tell you, what is listed and doesn't even go to anywhere, you've got positive behavioral interventions and supports, and you click on it and it just goes back to the homepage. You go to Social and Emotional Learning, it goes to the homepage. Trauma Informed, it goes to the homepage. Why would you not have autism support, which you claim is offering the strategies that these parents have licensed BCBA RBTs to do? And why wouldn't you list the three big programs that students get sent out of zone for? That would be autism specialty classes? There's no definition for that, and yet they exist, like at North Shore, Northwest Middle School. Extended Resource. If a kid is over a certain amount of time, they can apparently get sent away from their zone school for that. And CDC, Comprehensive Developmental Classroom. These are the biggies right here, and yet there's not even a button for them. So I'd also like to point out that you've got occupational and physical therapy as a button, and also speech and language therapy, and there's no music therapy. button and also Speech and Language Therapy and there's no Music Therapy. Well, I know that one student gets it in this district at least after two years of fighting and finally a lawsuit that within 30 days was settled and you guys signed that contract for Knoxville Music Therapy. Another part is it only says under Child Find ages three through five and Child Find is preschool through 12th grade. In fact, there's a gifted, intellectual gifted lawsuit that cites this link and it still hasn't been corrected. So I'm hoping that in hopefully a new era, that transparency and correct information is the first start to improving our special education. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Thompson. Just state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes. Welcome.
Jessica Thompson, Knoxville, Knox County. My name is Jessica Thompson. I've been a professional in the field of ABA for 15 years, both in Virginia and Tennessee. I'm passionate about ABA and the success I've witnessed firsthand, especially in the school systems. I currently oversee the client services for East and Northeast Tennessee at Positive Behavior Support Corporation and over the last four years have spoken with educators, principals, director of educations all over the state of Tennessee, especially in, in this area. And most of the feedback I've received is we'll take all the, all the support we can get. If confidentiality is the main reason for Knox County's district in terms of letting outside providers support their clients in their natural environment setting, then most providers are willing to sign any kind of confidentiality agreement. We're open to specifying terms if needed. You know, as ABA providers, we're there to help support clients, your students, your staff, provide tools and intervention using evidence-based research focused on and dedicated to the success, progress, and overall well-being of clients and families. We are not there to judge or condemn. A collaborative approach is in the best interest of all of our clients for coordination of care, generalization, and overall progress with our main purpose being to fade services as soon as possible. You know, when I moved to East Tennessee, there were only two companies and now, and that was mostly center. Now there are tons of center-based, there's tons of in-home and the fact is that there are just too many students, children, and adults in need that qualify and that are approved ABA services just here in East Tennessee with the leading number coming from Knox County and an exponential amount of guardians requesting support. The need of ABA in Tennessee and in East Tennessee is huge and frankly, there are not enough providers in our area to support the number of children needing the services. Overseeing client services in this area, I'm well aware of the number of children that need services in Knox County, not taking into account the other children on waiting lists in other areas and the children here that have IEPs within Knox County. And I think it's safe to say that even if Knox County had the five licensed behavior board-certified analysts on staff, it still wouldn't be nearly enough oversight and training at the level deemed medically necessary or ethically required under the BACB Code of Ethics. We're here to support you and the school and the special education teams in the district. We wouldn't require, you know, most of the services are funded by insurance, don't require us to remove students from academic time, nor the school district will need to pay for those services. We would work within the school each day and arrange the environment, help with the teachers to arrange the environment and student effort success. We use a least intrusive prompts, our hypervigilant extinguishing prompt dependency and our experience in handling intensive maladaptive behaviors and don't use restraints.
Thank you. That concludes public forum.
All right. And just quickly before we adjourn, I know that, just to mention, Mr. Myers isn't here tonight, unfortunately. He could not be here tonight, but I know he's watching from Nashville, I believe, or wherever he may be. So, and, you know, just to reiterate, I am optimistic and was happy to hear your announcement on Monday night and I know that there's at least one mom we heard from tonight that was, I talked to her earlier today and she was excited about that as well and, you know, she even said, I want to be part of the solution, so I'm very hopeful moving forward.
I agree. I'm, I am thrilled that Knox County is making this a priority in reviewing those special education policies. And I just wanted to thank all the parents that came to speak on this tonight and advocating for your children. Thank you for being here.
Yep. Meeting adjourned.